Evening. My name is Vince Snoblet, President of Speedway Town Council. It is June 12th, 2023, and it's 7:01 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of tonight's council open. First on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If everybody would turn their cell phones off, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of May 8th, 2023 meeting. These minutes have previously been distributed. If there's no changes or corrections, I'll ask for approval as submitted. There are no changes. The meeting minutes are approved. Next up is the Speedway Historical Society. Rocky Brown, welcome.
Hello, Town Council. This, I think, for us would be a formal introduction of the Speedway Indiana Historical Society, who many of whom are here today. And please stand just to let you all know who we are, because I don't think you really have been introduced to who we are.
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. They do all our things, I say, most of the time. We are an established organization, and we have, since 2022, set up by Tom Potchef and Rick Hammer, really began the writing the documents that started us off. We meet regularly, at least once a month, and we've thoroughly discussed who we are, what we do, what we are about, what we're limited with. And we're beginning to interact with other historical societies, including the State of Indiana Historical Society, the Indianapolis Public Library, that has a digital library online, and also an encyclopedia of Indianapolis online that we can connect with. We've pretty much decided our project at the moment is the Centennial Book. So now that we're finished, basically, with almost as much as we can do as volunteers, we're about to launch into things that have something to do with money. So really, we're here formally to request advice from you all and funding, if possible, for the Historical Society. And I've handed out a form that has our reasoning behind it. I think you received it earlier. And take a look at it. I won't just read it to you, but it talks about what the money will be needed for in the near future. We have started a website and an online presence, and we're about ready to scan and receive and scan documents. So my request, I guess, is for any thoughts where we might go to get funds, but also if, in fact, any funds are available through you, that would be nice.
Okay.
Have I left anything out?
Well, since everyone else is speaking, I'll go ahead and ask a couple of questions or make a couple of points as Rocky knows and the Historical Society knows. Up until about a year ago, when I was dealing, started dealing with some family issues, I've been a part of the Historical Society and still feel a part, just not able to participate.
We miss you, Gary.
Thanks. Appreciate that. The, you know, there's, there's just getting some of the things out in the public eye, just as you described. There's talk of, you know, doing a centennial book similar to what, is it the Blue Book or Green Book? I'm colorblind, so it looks both to me. But that was from '76, so there's interest in that, whether it's an actual printed document or a digital document or continuing fixing some of the historical, we can call them errors, but, you know, things that maybe need to be made more accurate from '76. There was also talk about some of the things that were done in '76 that, you know, to celebrate the town's 50th birthday or anniversary and, you know, how we would in '26 celebrate the town's 100th birthday. So those are, those are some of the things that we talked about. And I think, you know, it'd be interesting to hear how many dollars you think is necessary to do what, what you'd do with that, et cetera. That'd be some of my questions or thoughts.
Well, our goal, as I've said in the document here, is $10,000. Don't want that all from you, all from other organizations, but that's a good starting point. I see, or we envision, the book to be paying for itself. So the $10,000 is more to establish us as a, as a full-fledged organization that has a future, that'll go past our time on the Historical Society. So to have some funds available to begin to do things, think outside the box, is what we're looking for long term. Short term is just to have the money to print a book and begin to sell it. Does that answer your question, Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think it's important to understand the sources and uses of the funds and what your overall objective would be in spending that revenue and what kind of payback to the town citizens. You know, how is that information going to be available? Is it all going to be digital? You know, and what other resources are you accessing to gain all that information? Are you using our communications department and, you know, some of our people to, you know, because they do annual reports every year and have a review of last year's happenings in terms of the town that you could use as your, one of our resource of looking up, you know, what goes on.
We looked into earlier about connecting up with the town more completely, having a website out of the town's social media sources, having emails that are connected with the town's email address. But I think, as I discussed with Grant and informally with you all and with our group, we decided to stay independent in that you didn't want closets filled with our documents here.
Right.
So we would rather not have that happen. So we're looking for other sources of storing the documents that would be safe and secure. And so we're going along that route. And so the library is very helpful. They said, sure, bring your cabinets in here. Okay, that'd be fine. But again, we're looking for a longer-term solution for the Historical Society to base its activities on, not just produce a book and be done. We don't want to do that. That's kind of what happened with the 50th anniversary book.
Right.
We want to be around longer than that.
Yeah.
Does that kind of...
Yeah, that helps out, you know, and I think also, you know, from, is including our major stakeholders and, you know, all of anybody, you know, far as Allison's and IMS and all those guys. You know, a lot has happened in the last, since the last period, what, in 1976, you know, at that point in time. I think it was the last one that was done.
Well, one of the organizations we're really getting connected with better through Dave Oath is a Rolls-Royce Historical Trust Society. And of course, Allison is part of that in some way. So he's been bringing those resources to us, and we're connecting with them.
Right.
So that's an option that I think will build, an option, a connection that will build as time goes.
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I mean, I appreciate you guys spending all the time and effort putting this together. I'm sure it's a task that, you know, is going to be appreciated when you're done from that standpoint, and it's going to seem like a long, long ways to get there and...
Well, yeah, the worth of the history of the town is phenomenal. The things I keep finding out, and I kind of know what's going on, but I keep discovering new things all the time. So having a way to put that into the public presence is what we're about. So...
Great.
That's where we are.
Rocky, one of the things you had an asterisk at the bottom of the document you handed us, because you mentioned an interest in eventually getting historical documents, structures, landscapes, et cetera, but not yet.
And Gary, thank you. You motivated that conversation with the State Historical Society, and we went into it, can we receive things we have no place to put it? And Rolls-Royce Historical Trust does, so that's one thing. But documents themselves, they need to be safe. I was telling David, I've got documents from my father-in-law. They're in our basement. That would be great to be in the Rolls-Royce Historical Trust or with us somewhere, but we don't have a place to put them to be safe. So coming up with a way to handle that is what we're about now. And we're keep, beginning to hit on the point where we need funds to be able to do things, whether it's buy file boxes, whether it's hire some scanning people or things like that. So that's where we are at this point.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, hearing none. Thank you very much, Rocky. I appreciate it. You guys coming in. And feel free to keep the public informed of your progress.
We're, we're working on it. I guess this is not the place to ask for a motion for money for us, I guess.
Well, I hadn't seen...
Oh, all right. I'll sit down.
Don't have a motion, and nor do we have any funds allocated for that. Okay.
I will make one, one additional comment, and I've spoken about this with Rock about this. You know, there are a couple of town-sponsored or town-associated entities that I believe could use their funding to assist in this effort. They have their own boards or commissions. A good example is the Community Development Corporation. I also think the Redevelopment Commission could consider. I'm not trying to tell them any amounts or, I will say this, general property tax dollars are very regulated about how we can and cannot spend those. Part of our income also is our sewer and water and stormwater fees. Those also have specific dedicated purposes. I think it's asked a lot, why can't we do this? Well, there are state laws that govern how some of those funds can be spent. The two organizations I mentioned specifically have a little, different funding sources that have different requirements and have the ability to assist with some of these efforts. I also think the Chamber of Commerce should be approached. I sit on that board as well. I also think our major stakeholders, as Vince mentioned, IMS, Allison, Praxair, they have a vested interest in this community and its continued growth and development. So those are just my, my general comments.
Yeah. Thank you. No other discussion? I'm going to go ahead and move on to item four. It's approval for a proposal agreed order with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, Grant?
Yes, thank you, Vince. So in the audience this evening, Brad Sloan, our wastewater superintendent, is here, as well as Bridget from Westler. They'll answer any questions that you might have. I'm going to give a brief overview of this. If there's any additional detail needed, they're more than willing to jump up and go through a lengthy discussion of it, I'm, I'm sure. Indiana Department of Environmental Management went through a long-term control review over the past several months. In fact, this letter that you're being asked to consider and approve this evening was given to the town in mid-April. What they did is they reviewed our stormwater control, that long-term control plan. We have design limitations on what can and cannot happen with our wastewater. As you know, when we have a very heavy rain event or multiple heavy rain events over a three, four, five, or even a week period, sometimes those mains can become clogged with water that seeps in from the ground. That's a very healthy part of sewer systems, and they can lead to surcharges or overflows, whatever, into the street or into creeks, et cetera. We take those things very seriously. In fact, the town, many, many years ago, put several million dollars into a control overflow tank, and it doesn't necessarily keep up with what our requirements are today. So this agreed order tonight, there were some violations found. We exceeded those limits on these rain events, and they have asked us to do a review of our processes and system and create, and I'll refer you to page two of the agreed order, not of the letter on the front, but the agreed order itself. IDEM wishes us to review and put together a combined sewer overflow long-term control plan. They are giving us 60 days to do this from the date of the approval of this letter, which is today. We have asked Westler, they've actually provided an amendment to one of their on-call agreements, that's the next item on the agenda, to assist us with that effort. They are familiar with our systems. They've been working with the town for multiple years and are best suited to provide guidance on this effort. But we do have to create this CSO plan, and they will assist that. That will be submitted to IDEM as a part of this process. And what that plan is going to do is identify improvements that we need to do to the system, whatever that might be, separation of lines. We've identified a couple of areas where we think there could be some cost-effective solutions to that. We're not expecting this to be millions and millions of dollars. I hope it isn't that, that much. But we, we do know that there will be some capital improvements needed that will come out of this process, and we're required to do this. IDEM provides us with a permit to operate a wastewater treatment plant. Brad is our lead operator as the wastewater treatment supervisor, and his permit is on the line as well. I mean, he has to, he works hard to keep these things in line, identify problems, deal with them as needed, and make those corrections. That's what we pay him to do, and they've done a good job of that. So with that, I'll answer any questions, or Bridget or Brad can answer any questions that you might have. We have discussed this with the council in a couple of communications. This is a required next step in that process, and staff recommends that we approve this agreement. Vince will sign it and send it back to IDEM.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion so we can actually have discussion on this by Robert's rules, but to approve the proposed agreed order as described by our town manager.
Second. Yeah, I have a motion in a second, so I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody has any questions of Grant or Brad at this time?
I guess my, just, I've asked some of these questions when we've had individual conversations, but, and Brad, this isn't so much for you as it is, it might be, but more for Westler. Were these, was this something that we expected when we looked in the last couple of years at some of the, some of the improvements we needed to make?
Yep. So since the long-term control plan was written and the CSO facility was built, there's basically been letters every three or four years from IDEM basically saying, hey, we're still seeing that you're having CS overflow events during rain events that aren't quite as large as what's written in the original long-term control plan. And so this was the third round of notification that the town received from IDEM. And so it's not a large surprise that at this point they have felt like there has to be some next level of action, which in their mind is the agreed order to just basically have the town come up with a compliance plan that says, hey, we understand that what we have right now isn't meeting your requirements. Here's what our plan is to you on how we're going to correct this. So that first step is just basically coming up with the schedule of items that you think could be actionable items to look into the problem and then propose the next step. But I think if, you know, if this was the first time you were getting a letter and it hadn't been happening since 2012, I'd be very surprised that IDEM had taken this action, but since that they see it basically as a continuous issue. But another thing I wanted to mention is it's not that nothing's working right at the plant. Everything that's happening in the plant is actually working better than we could hope. They're pushing as much flow through it. It's just that the amount of flow coming to the plant, that storm flow that gets in the lines in certain spots of town is at such a high rate that your existing facilities just can't keep up with that.
So is that rate more than it was in 2012?
Yes and no, I would say. So I think the intensity of some of the rainfall events we've seen just as the climate continues to change everywhere, a lot of communities are seeing this, where it gets to the plant faster than they might have expected. Brad's also explained to me, and you can touch on this, that there was the interceptor, the largest line that comes in to the plant. When the original long-term control plan was considered, there was supposed to be storage of upward of a million gallons in that. And unfortunately, with the way the actual system operates, you can't take advantage of all million gallons. So you actually have a little bit less storage than that original design plan was hoping you'd be able to utilize, which is why you might not have enough space to hold all the water in your existing basins.
So where's the tipping point in terms of the amount of rainfall? Two inches, three inches?
Yeah. So you need to be able to have two inches of rainfall that you can capture, or the amount of rain that you get into.
What period of time?
Time. And that's, that's a 10-year, one-hour storm.
Can you unpack that a little bit for the public?
Yeah. So that basically means that if you get two inches of rain, basically, in what they consider 24, 24 hours, basically, though, then they'll say, yep, you've had two inches of rain over a 24-hour period, even if you have a CSO event that's considered an allowable event. You aren't expected to handle that much rain. But if you say you only got an inch of rain and you still had an overflow event at the plant, then that's basically a mark against, or in their mind, what they consider to be a violation. So whenever Brad has to fill out his reports on that, what IDEM is looking to see is, was there two inches of rain? And a lot of times, if there's not, then they need additional justification on why maybe that event has occurred. In some cases, they're willing to understand that there's exceptions, but it started to happen at a frequency that they're not comfortable with.
Sure. Where do they take that gauge reading at of rain? Is that out at the airport?
Yes, that's at the equalization basin at the plant, the CSO discharge.
Okay.
One point that IDEM did make to us is that if you have multiple gauges in your system, they will base the rainfall off of the gauge that receives the most rain. Because there are some times where you do have actually, it sounds crazy, but you have more heavy rainfall in a part of town than you do at the plant or vice versa. And so, you know, one thing Brad and I and Grant have talked about previously is maybe it's good to get another official gauge somewhere else in your system just to help quantify how much rain the whole, or how much rain the whole system is seeing in the future, and that might be able to help as one component of the compliance plan.
Can you let the public know what our current separation is between wastewater and stormwater? It's not 100%.
We're about 95%.
95%.
95%.
And that's considered basically almost the gold standard of what a CSO community can be. The IDEM does not have the expectation that there's going to be 100% separation in a system. It's near impossible for systems such as yourself that were built originally as a combined system. So they're very happy with the fact that 95% of the system has been separated. It's just how can we manage that 5% that's still coming into the system without letting more than desired out into the water body?
I've been around long enough. It seemed to have a memory of it being more like a one-hour rainfall over, over that period of time. Now it's, you're talking about two, two inches. I'm sorry, one inch back in the day, now two inches. And I would imagine IDEM is very heavily controlled by EPA because of dollars that are coming in the state from the Fed, right?
Yep. And this does stem from a federal standpoint, and then IDEM is just issuing sort of regulations as they get passed down. There are two components of it, too. You have to be able to transport a certain amount of flow to the facility and then provide treatment for it right away. And then the other part is how much you have to be able to get, at least, to your CSO tanks. So sometimes it does get a little confusing because people refer to both of those flow rates. And I think you are about one inch with how much you just need to be able to get to the plant and tree.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Public's benefit, what parts or part of our system are the, would be the major offender or offenders in this regard? In other words, what part of town?
Are you still getting the stormwater in? You want to speak to that, Brad?
Well, that would be the Chapel Hill area that we've talked about before. They are, that still seems to be a problem place.
Is that the major?
I would say that's probably the major one, because that's where we also, the lift station can't keep up, and we have naturally SSO events, sanitary sewer overflows there.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Have we lined the sewer system in Chapel Hill?
Those I've been lined.
One of the big problems is you've got perimeter drains and some pumps that have been connected in. They may have been disconnected 10 years ago. New owners have come in and connected those in. We need, we do have a proposal from Westler to look at doing some inspections and getting into those homes to make sure those things are not occurring. And that's something we also need to do, probably as part of this long-term control plan amendment. I think that would be a good first step, or at least something we can commit to that I believe is more cost-effective and can reduce a good amount of that, not all of it, but, but a good percentage. I think the one concern staff has and we have, IDEM sometimes, they don't take into account rain severity over an extended period of time or a certain time of year. Ground's frozen, you get a lot of rain. It's a totally different ballgame than if it's dry like it is now and it rains four inches. We're just not going to have those problems, but it, it's a natural thing that happens, and we deal with it the best we can, have minor issues, but not anything major. I don't want anyone to think that this is a major, we're dumping millions of gallons. We're not. We just have a slight overflow from time to time.
You're just over the threshold that IDEM is looking to see, to Grant's point. So there are a couple facets to it, but just being able to reduce the amount of rainwater that gets in your system is an excellent first way to show you're taking actionable items before having to construct anything or do some sort of capital project. And historically, IDEM has been very open to that. Really, at this point, they're just looking to say, hey, we need you to tell us what your plan is and that you're actually working on something. And as long as you can, they can see that you're making progress, that's really what they care about. I will point out that in the agreed order, there is a note basically that says, hey, if your capital improvements plan is going to be spread over more than five years, if you're proposing something that's going to take longer than five years to do, they do want to see some sort of financial justification. They're really just wanting to show that, hey, if you think one of the larger steps is going to be, you know, a financial burden to the community more severe than just inspection work in the field, then they just need to see, understand that it's a cost that's causing this to be spread out for a little bit more than five years to create the resolution that they're looking for. So that would be part of the capital.
That's under Section 2, Order, Paragraph 3.
Just a final point of clarification, that, I think you said million-dollar, or million-dollar, million-gallon storage tank that's, doesn't hold a million gallons. Is that located at the plant, or is that in Chapel Hill? Where are we talking?
That's located at the plant.
Okay.
It's the pipe actually running to the plant. Yep, but it's right in that area. So, and then fortunately, you do have your two large tanks at the treatment plant that are able to hold just as much as they were designed for. So those are operating appropriately.
I know one of the things we've discussed is, you know, amongst ourselves is that big line coming in on Grande and, you know, Castle, Grande, the interceptor. Some of the issues we have is it gets full, we need to probably take some of those neighborhoods to the north off, put them on whatever, a grinder pump system that has a different pipe going to the plant. That potentially could help. I know we've looked at that. We don't know exactly all the, but that's a lower cost. I'm not going to say lower cost, but it, it's, it's pretty effective at correcting some of these issues.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will also note that while Vince will be signing, I think, Bob, it requires counsel for the town to sign as well. And we need to get that done tonight so we can get it sent off to them tomorrow.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the proposed agreed order with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Next item on the agenda is approval of Amendment Number 1 to Task Order and Number 2 with Westler Engineering for Wastewater On-Call Services, Grant?
Yes, so we have various on-call agreements with several different engineering firms. Westler has one that we call our General Wastewater On-Call. Westler has one that we call our General Wastewater On Call. It's set at $20,000. The last one you approved last spring was 20. With this work included, we estimate not to exceed 10,000. So we're asking that that be amended by this document to go from 20,000 to not to exceed 30,000. If for some reason work needs to be above and beyond that, I would have to give approval or come to the council to get a new amount. We do believe that $10,000 addition should take care of this long-term control plan update.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. We approve Amendment Number 1 to Task Order Number 2 with Westler Engineering for Wastewater On Call Services.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. So open up for, is there any discussion of this motion? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of Amendment Number 1 to Task Order and Number 2 with Westler Engineering for Wastewater On Call Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 1376, an ordinance amending the Town Code Speedway, Indiana, Chapter 2.5, relating to the payment of claims. Phillip?
Thank you. I would ask for the council's consideration and approval of the amendment. This pertains to two different issues. One being, the state legislature recently passed a statute allowing us to make deposits in certain situations if that is approved by the council. And so, one provision in here deals with that, and then the other provisions deal with, from time to time, that there need to be claims that would be paid before council approval. They would still appear on your claim sheet as they do today, but the payment would be made in advance if they met all the other specifications.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 1376 as presented by our clerk treasurer.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Open up for discussion? Any questions for Phillip?
The only question is, you talked about specifications, I'm assuming there's a max dollar amount? Or something of that nature?
No, there's not a max dollar amount, but they have to fall within certain categories and obviously have to be subject to itemized invoices that go through the process that ultimately ends up with me before it comes to you.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, to your point on, on the actual down payments, those, the statutory limits on those are either 50% of the total price or $2 million if it's some project that's much larger than that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on Ordinance 1376, ordinance amending, amending the Town Council Code of Speedway, Chapter 2.5O, relating to the payment of claims. Go ahead and then call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Next item is the approval of claims and utility adjustments. Phillip?
No claims only for you this evening.
Okay.
We did not have a second meeting in March, so it's a larger set of claims than what we've seen in a while. It is 35 pages total from the dates covering May 6 through June 9, 2023, totaling $5,261,337.41. Welcome your questions, but I would ask for your approval of the same.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented to us by the clerk treasurer. Second?
Got a motion and a second. Open up for any questions for Phillip? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the claims as submitted by your town clerk treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, next on the agenda is a report from our department supervisors. We'll start off with Cheryl.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thank you. I want to thank the residents and the visiting race fans for coming out to this year's Rockin' on Main event. Thanks to Mother Nature, we had a perfect weather that night. Compared to the past events we've had, we estimated about 4,000 to 5,000 people attended Main Street that night. It was amazing to see so many people out having fun, enjoying the beer garden, shopping at the arts and crafts, checking out the vintage race cars, the food trucks, and the Main Street restaurants and bars. No one went hungry and no one was ever lost for good drinks. The music was amazing, it was all really good. We had Last Opaca, Living Proof, and Clayton Anderson, excuse me, Clayton Anderson, they filled the streets until about 11 o'clock with music. I do want to steal a few minutes tonight, if that's okay, to share my thanks to an awful lot of people. Thank you, first of all, council, for approving the community event, as well as trusting and supporting me to coordinate the event. We start planning Rockin' about six months out, and it's a true collaboration of every department in the town. A huge thanks to the amazing people who serve our community day in and day out. I'm not going to name names, but I'm just going to try and, hopefully I don't miss anyone. The street department plays a huge event in this. Considering it's the busiest month of the May, they, busiest month of the year, they do an amazing job. The police department, fire department, parks and rec, public works, Speedway administration and the offices, the staff in the clerk treasurer's office, SCTV, every department has some kind of a role in this event. I also want to thank the volunteers who gave their time to work the event before, during, and after. Speedway Animal Rescue was there, running the kids zone. Speedway Chamber of Commerce was there till about 12:30 that night, helping clean up. The staff in the clerk treasurer's office was doing some of the permitting and the stands, along with all their other permits that they do, they helped out with that. Speedway Lyons Bernie, and I apologize if I don't get the last name right, Chinkowski, was there during the whole event, helping out. And then, I'm going to thank my kids as well. Hannah and Jamie Dunbar were there for the entire time until 1 o'clock in the morning with me. Rockin' on Main is organized with a zero-town budget. It is 100% funded by community sponsorship, so we owe a huge thank you to this year's generous sponsors, whose financial support and in-kind donations made this community event possible. I have a long list here. Waste Management, USAC Racing, Indianapolis Motor Speedway, Lindy Praxair, Dawson's on Main, Vintage Indy Registry, Speedway Lyons Club, Speedway Fire Department, American Structure Point, GAI Consultants, Fundy's Ice Cream and Sweets, First Group Engineering, RNDC, and Monarch Distributing. Another note of thanks to Clayton Anderson, one of the performers. We've contracted with Clayton to perform at Rockin' on Main through May 2028. This partnership actually equates to about a $50,000 value, according to him, what he charges for his other concerts. This includes his concert performance, their marketing efforts, the use of his stage, sound system, and all his crew and staff, as well as the marketing that he did on their behalf. All of this is played, is paid for through Clayton's own sponsorships at no cost to the town. Lastly, I'm in the process of reaching out to Main Street businesses, the vendors, food trucks, town departments, to get feedback on what worked well and what didn't work so well. The event was a big success, I think, but we can always learn from what we did this year and maybe make it better the following year. So, working on that right now. That was it for Rockin' on Main, and then I just have a few event reminders. Does anyone have questions on Rockin' on Main before I move on?
Cheryl, how much did we raise through sponsorships?
We raised just under 23,000, which was a little over double of last year.
Good job.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So, any other questions on that? No? Okay. Few event reminders, June 13, 14, and 15 this week is heavy trash days. June 22, and this one we just pushed out, I was not aware of it, there's a local art festival by Speedway Arts Council in Voom Room. It will be at the Voom Room parking lot, and again, that's June 22 from 6 to 8 p.m. Looks like it includes local artists, vintage pop-up shops, and a debut of the newest mural coming to Main Street. June 23 and 24, a reminder is the St. Chris Midsummer Festival. That goes on Friday night from 5 to midnight, and I believe Saturday from 3 to midnight. They have an event set up on their webpage for additional details. It is at St. Chris Parish Campus. There'll be food, beer, lemon shakeups, and live music. This one is on into July. July 15, Martha Conkle with Conkle Funeral Homes will be turning 100 years old. So there's going to be a birthday celebration for her. The open house, and what the community has invited, is from 11 to 2. Again, that's July 15 at Conkle Funeral Homes. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Got to applaud you, I mean, everything went so well, and you're right, kind of what you did for the weather was tremendous, you know, cool.
I take credit for the weather, yes.
I'm sure you did. But no, I, I think everybody, it was amazing, you know, it just wasn't down by 16th Street. You know, Daredevil had a band there, there's more activity going on in Big Woods, and it was good to see the whole street busy on a Friday.
Yeah.
And then we could recover for one day before the race hit. So, you know, appreciate all that. And absolutely, I think the police department did a great job of corralling everybody and making sure that it was going smooth at that point in time, so.
I did like that you mentioned Big Woods, they had their, what they had going at their facility, but they also had a shop set up within, within the event area. So they had two things going on on time, so did barbecue and bourbon. And then I've had a couple other places reach out to me after the event that they want to participate next year, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of comments on the cars that were there. I mean, there, it was a good event for people to kind of like review all the old cars that they're used to seeing and some of the antique cars. I think it was really good to interface with those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chief Upchek?
Good evening, council. First of all, we'll start off with the follow Cheryl, our Indianapolis 500 update. The race went off, I would like to say flawlessly. We, we got our probably 350,000 people in and out, and we'd be remiss not to thank our other public safety partners that come in and assist us on that day. The state police, IMPD, Marion County Sheriff's Department, all the federal agencies. And most people that come here to see the public safety team, they can't believe that we worked that well together. And it's truly a feat in of itself to get those many agencies to, to come, and we get people in and get them out, and we didn't have any major events, and it was a good day. Like, we've always talked, one of our big events is always weather, and we had a perfect weather day that day, so it really helped us out with medical runs, and I think Chief Fishburne can attest to that. So, but the, the race went off without a hitch. So, I'd also like to advise council, we swore in our seventh reserve officer on May 31, Officer Todd Pennington. He was with us previously as a reserve officer and stepped away and decided he wanted to come back. So Todd was sworn in, and he has undergone his retraining to resume his duties as a reserve officer. So, I'd like to do the code enforcement report real quick. As far as code enforcement officers, our code enforcement ordinance violations were 179. Verbal warnings for the month of May were 12. Written warnings were 147. 32 citations were issued. Right-of-way signs were 125. 121 public assists. There were 35 complaints followed up on, eight disorderly housing complaints, and 845 site visits. And for building inspector, the ordinance violations were 66. Verbal warnings were 237, written warnings were two, right-of-way signs were 32, public assists were 71, complaints nine, and building inspections 161, and site visits 452. And lastly, I would like to, to recognize, as we all know, Sandy Tona left us a couple years ago, and we'd like to acknowledge Sandy's passing last week and offer our condolences to the family. Sandy, not too many irreplaceable people in the world, and Sandy was one of those. So, she was an institution with the department, and as we always said, she was truly the brains of the police department. And we truly miss Sandy, and like I said, our condolences go out to her family, so.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for chief?
Did you get any rest?
Yes. I just got back from Cabo, so. A little bit of rest.
A little rest.
So, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Todd Cook.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick updates on the hotel project. You know, there's Hotel Equities still talking to potential lenders, so we continue to have weekly calls with them. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll get some good news this week. The Gateway Signage Project, site mobilization is planned for next week, and so construction will start and should be complete in October. Aside from that, other meetings that I've had in the past month, the Indiana Destination Development Corporation, TAF Law did a SCTV update for Founder Square. So if you haven't seen that yet, be sure and check it out. The N-Zone, which is the foreign trade zone, made a presentation to a group called NARI, which is a national association of renovations, renovators. TNH Investments, they're the developers of the Founder Square senior apartments. Urban Land Institute took a tour of a manufactured housing factory out on the east side called Volume Mod, that was kind of an interesting product that they're building. Used to be Schneider Engineering, I think it's called Schneider Geomatics now. MHG Hotels, MHG was able to open in time for the race, I'm not sure how many rooms they had available, but they were really pleased to, pleased to be open in time for the race. PNC Bank, Lennar Homes, Grant and I had a nice meeting with OMR two weeks ago. Daredevil, Schmidt Associates, the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization, the IMPO, a consulting firm called V3, also the Bev Shop, La Peep, and Bier &amp; Designs, all got opened in time for May activities, and Puppy Pit Stop as well. Had two, two nice parking agreements, one with USAC, which they've asked to extend through the Clayton Anderson contract through 2028. And we also do two lots with IMS, so the SRC is able to make a little bit of money there. And I think Tammy raised some money for the Parks Department on some of our other lots. I think it was about 15,000 or something like that?
13.
13.
Parks gets 10.
13-ish, and Parks gets, gets 10 of that, so. Happy to answer any questions?
Sure.
You might all have?
Any questions? What, who's managing the Gateway project, Arthur?
Who's managing?
Yeah, what organizations managing it?
We have Veritas as the ownership.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bob Fishburne?
Oh, thank you. My, my, I'm not sick. I cheered a little too loud at some baseball games this weekend, so please excuse my, my hoarseness. Wanted to also piggyback on the 500 event and thank all of the Marion County departments. Every single department in Marion County helps us on Carb Day. Every single department in Marion County helps us on carb day and race day. Want to thank them for the apparatus they send to help us manage that event. And I do want to share with you one story. We responded to a cardiac arrest at 16th and Main at about 11:30 on race day. So think about 11:30 on race day. Yeah. A bystander was doing CPR. A state police officer assisted with that CPR. And then an AED shock from our AED and Engine 89 was administered. Engine 89 arrived, assisted with CPR and airway control. After one or two rounds of CPR, consciousness was achieved. And Medic 48 and one of our personnel drove the patient down to Methodist, which then took, you know, effort from Speedway PD, IMPD to get us, you know, where we needed to go. That individual, 75-year-old from Ohio, received a pacemaker and was released to go home two days later. So on race day at that time of day, for all of those things to come together and the people, it really does talk about the planning that goes into that. The tabletops we do, that Chuck and I are a part of planning, and the way those organizations all work together at 11:30 on race day. Think about when the checkered flag drops. So I just wanted to give kudos to all those organizations. We, on the Tuesday and Wednesday after the race, we brought on two new hires, replacing a retiree and a medical pension. And so they're going. Overtime's not quite as bad, and they're doing a great job. One comes to us from Plainfield and one comes to us from Monroe Township. But it was a traditional process. And then something that President Knoblot had asked me to do, and it's a great idea, for the month of May, we had 377 runs. It's a little bit elevated, but not significantly from what we would do other months. Thirty-four percent of those are fire-related. That could be a false alarm. That could be, you know, food on the stove. That could be, you know, many things. Sixty-six percent of those are EMS. That's just for the two stations, so 377. And I'm going to start giving those stats each month, so. If you don't have any other questions, I won't make you suffer through my voice anymore.
No, you're not suffering.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Tammy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oftentimes, when I give my report, I give the good things and then I give the not-so-good things. Today, I'm going to do that in reverse. We'll start with the not-so-good things. We did have some vandalism at Meadowwood Park a couple weeks ago. Somebody went in and busted one of the toilet tanks in the one stall in the men's restroom. I don't understand the whole vandalism at all, but much less busting a whole tank like that. Fortunately, with those donations we had from last year, we were able to get that back up and running. I've been receiving, I literally this past week received three different complaints or reports of motorbikes, small motorcycles on the trails and going through the parks. Of course, I don't hear about them until after the fact. And I'm trying to get the word out again that when people see something, they need to contact the non-emergency number immediately because the police can't do anything about it if they're not made aware of it at the time it's in progress. So I just want to throw that out there again. Lots often on the trail, especially the BNO, and we're seeing in Leonard Park just off the BNO, quite a bit more graffiti that's happening on our trash cans and the street signs. There are some members in the community that when they see those, they're taking, cleaning stuff out, and they're actually cleaning them off themselves. I don't, I was going to ask Rob this, but the trash cans are not able to clean that graffiti off the trash cans. I don't know if that's because maybe they don't have that anti-graffiti paint on them. But these community members have actually went out there, they tried to clean them off, and they repainted them to make them look nice again. So we want to try to clean this up when we see it because hopefully that will help deter it. And I don't know if anybody has any contacts with Zores, but their wall along the BNO is just riddled with graffiti. So I don't know if there's something, an effort that could be made to kind of work on getting rid of some of this graffiti that's happening. The other complaint, I just recently, people contacted me today complaining about people in the park after dark playing loud music. And again, I said, you calling me after the fact, I can't do anything about it. You need to be contacting the non-emergency number right when it happens so they can go take care of it. We did up our fines to $150 for these people that are violating it. And so anyway, again, if you see something, call immediately. We can't do anything about it after the fact. So, on to good things. I want to thank all the volunteers that have helped me over the last month. We were fortunate in May to have Praxair volunteers help at Leonard Park with some painting and some mulching, as well as the Speedway Garden Club planting and weeding in our memorial bench area and our butterfly hummingbird garden. Those same two volunteer groups, Praxair as well as Speedway Garden Club volunteered again in Meadowwood Park. Praxair did painting for us just before the race, as well as the Speedway Garden Club weeded and added some new plants in the Harris Memorial Bench and Garden in Meadowwood Park. So we're real fortunate to have those volunteers help us get those types of things done. I also want to thank the Speedway High School Band Boosters. They helped me out a lot for the parking efforts during the month of May. The Speedway redevelopment did allow parks to utilize three different lots for parking. And obviously, myself and the volunteer that helps me all the time can only do one. So with those parking volunteers from the Band Boosters, we were able to park more lots. Not always all three every day, but we did get more done. And by doing so, we were able to get more money into the Parks Department. So we're very thankful for that. The first concert is scheduled for Thursday, June 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Meadowwood Park. There will not be a concert the week of July 4th, but then every Thursday starting July 13th through August 17th will be a concert, weather permitting. The market in Meadowwood started two weeks ago. This will be our third week, Thursdays from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., again at Meadowwood Park. The last two weeks have been attended very well, and the vendors have been very, very happy. We do have a new vendor that actually sells frozen beef and pork as well as fresh produce. And they seem to be very happy. They come out of Franklin, Indiana, so they're making a little bit of a trip over here, but they're very pleased with how things are going. So please come out and visit our vendors and support them on Thursdays from 5:00 to 7:00. And the thing I've been excited most to talk about is our camps. So our summer camp started last week, so one week down with three more to go. Last week is our busiest week. That's where we have the most camps. We also started our swim lessons last week. That lasts for three weeks total. Art Camp, on their last day, Friday, they ended the camp with a performance. A lot of parents and grandparents and friends came out. There was quite a few people out there watching them. It was very creative. The art teacher that teaches that camp is Amy Carroll. And she lets the kids decide what theater performance they're going to do at the end. And I was just so impressed with their creativity. They had a beach theme and appropriately named after each of the four elementary schools were the different beaches and the different issues that they were reporting on. Shark attack, jellyfish stings, a beached whale. So it was very cute. I did get a little bit of video footage, so hopefully, maybe at some point when Bill and Brian are doing some B-roll, we can add that to some of that. It's really cute. I received a message from a grandparent complimenting the basketball camp and how her grandson loves it. She indicated the high school players appeared to be having as much fun as the little kids. Her grandson is six years old, and he actually told her, "Doing these things makes us better humans." So I thought that was cute. And then in the swimming, because I am there all the time with the swim lessons, and it just does my heart good to see these kids, last year, how these little kids are scared to death of the water. They're crying, they don't want to get in. We have them just sit on the side. We splash water on their feet. You know, we try to make them as comfortable as possible. And then to see those same kids this year, jumping in on their own, halfway swimming. They're so excited to be there. They're upset when we don't have lessons on Fridays because they want to come every day. And one little boy, I just have to share this, he was so excited, jumped into the water, and he surprisingly stated, "I have water in my pants." So just the funny things that come out of their mouths, it's why I love doing what I'm doing, so. And that's my report for tonight.
Great report. Great report.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Brad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll start with the street department. Month of May, naturally, they worked the Indy 500 and worked very hard on that, did a good job. Picked up yard waste, mowing, started cleaning sanitary sewers, and their asphalt project is ongoing. At the water department, they treated 74 million gallons of water in the month of May. Construction on the new garage is going well. Water quality reports have been sent in. The plant pumped out 3.85 million gallons of water on race day. At the wastewater treatment plant, the plant treated 123 million gallons for the month of May. Maintenance started on rebuilding UV mods for disinfection. Mowing and groundskeeping ongoing. Flushed nitrification towers. And Don Mitchell got his IDM Class III certification, so we want to congratulate Don on that as well.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have.
I thought that the little video that was put out on the new garage, the barn raising and Speedway.
That was, I seen that. That was pretty neat.
That was pretty neat. I mean, anytime that you can build a roof on the ground and then have all those walls go up at the same time and all lock them into place, I commend whoever, you know, found that contractor to do that because that had to save a lot of time and effort. And you can also get a quality job done and a safe job for all the...
Safer, too.
Yeah, it's a lot safer, you know, from that standpoint, so. Thanks for, I don't know who put that together, I don't know if Brian did that or...
It was the TV, yeah.
Yeah, they're both of them. They did a great job of filming that and showing the public, you know, what's going up around town. And just to have that, to keep the equipment inside out of the elements will pay dividends in the long run to have that much storage around there from that stand.
Brad, you said on race day, we put out 3.85 million gallons of water. How much sewage did you deal with as a result of that?
We got about 1.75 million total for that day, so, you know, not too bad.
Wow.
So we had little minor hiccups at the plant, but nothing major. They got taken care of pretty quickly.
So you were actually less than water?
Yes. Yes.
Interesting.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Next is a report from our town manager, Grant Clannins.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I was able to attend the BNO Trail ribbon cutting last Monday evening at the Michigan Street Trailhead in Hawville. A great event. It was a great opportunity for some of our volunteers, like Bev Catter, Henry, as well as others, who have put countless hours into that effort. She's been working on that for 20 years. And if you remember, she didn't want it, which I think is always funny. Every time I hear that, I laugh. She did not want the BNO Trail going through town. Her mind changed, and she's put everything she's had into it. So that was a great event. We also, the garage was lifted up. That garage should be done late August, and the raw water intake should be done early to mid-July. So those projects are both moving forward, staying on budget. We also, I wanted to thank employees. I know everyone has already said that. It's really impressive to see everyone just do what you have to do. Sometimes that means coming in early, staying later, you don't get lunch, but people do it. And I don't hear many complaints. I don't think our supervisors or department heads do either. And it definitely shows Speedway is a fantastic venue for the month of May. I thought it looked amazing. I thought everybody did a great job, and the race went off well, and the weather was perfect. So we can't ask for anything better. That's all I have this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, a report from our council members. Gary Pedego.
Thank you, Vince. Just about every month, I include in my report something to the effect that if you're able to donate blood or red whole blood platelets, please do if you're healthy enough and physically able to do it. This past weekend, the Versity Blood Center of Indiana, formerly known as the Indiana Blood Center, issued a statement that, calling for actually emergency donors. The on-hand supply for local hospitals in our community was down to about one day. So it's gotten very, very critical at this point. I myself just donated platelets last week. I do so frequently. And I just urge everybody, if you're able and you have the time, make an appointment, whether it's with Versity or the Red Cross. It's, you can't really do anything any more positive for other human beings than donate blood. Something that, you know, can't be reproduced. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Eileen Fisher.
I just, again, as everyone has said, thanks to their staff for the jobs that they did over the month of May. I will have to say, several years being here, y'all look more rested this year than in the years past. But I also felt that everything went really smoothly. I just, there was something different about this year. It wasn't quite...
The weather.
Well, weather was a good part of it. I would agree with that. But, I mean, I just also felt that there, you know, it wasn't as much craziness as there usually is in the past. So I don't know if it's, you know, things that have changed from what Roger Penske's done over at the track or what it is, but I just, it was a great feeling. So you guys all did an outstanding job, so thank you.
You have a front row seat at your house, don't you?
I do. And I see a lot. And I didn't see that much this year.
Councilor David Lindsay is out tonight, so Gary and Councilor Gary Rix.
Yeah, I concur with Eileen and others. It was a great month of May. You know, we all kind of look forward to the month of May like we do the holidays, maybe the Christmas holidays and whatnot, and they come upon us and they're gone so quickly. We, you know, so many people work so hard, and obviously, our employees deserve enormous amount of credit. Companies in town, you know, the patrons, the visitors to our town, and then our residents, they really, to Eileen's point, you know, it was, the month went so well, the porch parties, just the decorations. Our town showed really well. I had a couple of different voicemails, and it got me thinking that if a resident or a businessperson in town saw something that, or they were impressed with what happened in the month of May, it'd be nice to hear that. Our employees really could use that pat on the back in a big way, and the companies that participate as well. So if you have that, I just encourage people to post it or send it to our communications department within the town. But thank you to everybody who made for a great month of May. Now we're kind of like looking forward to Christmas. We're, you know, 11 months off, 11 and a half months off. But the other thing I was going to do is, I wanted to thank Chief Fishburne and John Merritt in particular. I know there's a fire inspector in addition. I don't know Johnny's last name.
Russell.
Johnny Russell, thank you. He's a part-time fire inspector. They worked really hard to help a very important business member in our town, that's MHG Hotels, to get the Hampton Inn and Suites open for race weekend. They had temporary occupancy. There were people that actually had an opportunity to stay in the town that wouldn't have otherwise. So thank you to those folks. I know you were there yourself, Chief, and John Merritt has been there, was there a lot of hours, a lot of times throughout the month. I don't think the inspection numbers that you were able to share, Chief, you know, could actually be enough to compliment John. Because on top of all that, he was doing, you know, yeoman's work, inspecting all kinds of things going on around the town, just with tents and things that are the month of May. So I just want to make sure John gets credited for... So I just want to make sure John gets credited for the hard work that he put in. That's it.
Fantastic. Just one final report. I want to thank Tammy specifically for the parking. You know, that money goes back into programs that the Parks Department puts on. And she's able to do a lot more just with those three days of parking cars and a couple hours a day. It's amazing what you can get done. And I also want to reinforce that, you know, not only what is happening in the parks, but if things are going wrong in the public, we need to, you know, call the non-emergency number and let the police department know what's happening out there. I mean, we're, as a public citizen, we need to report and basically let them know of where things are going on. The graffiti on the BNO and things like that, those just take down our town. They don't add any positive to it at all. And.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry to interrupt your report.
No, go ahead.
You mentioned the non-emergency number. Chief, you mentioned that number. Tammy, I think you did, maybe. Do want to be clear, the non-emergency number, it's a landline number for us, but it dials directly into our dispatch at the same pace that 911 does. And the reason oftentimes we encourage people, A, if it's not a life and death thing, that's the number to use for sure. But if there's a safety issue, if you're using your cell phone, sometimes that call doesn't go to our dispatch. If you dial 911, it might go to Indy, at which you might have a 10-minute wait before you actually speak to a live human. So I have that phone on my, or that phone number on my phone. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Vince. But I think it's important to.
Oh, absolutely.
See why we're suggesting that non-emergency number. Chief, what is that number?
246-4343.
So it's 246-4343. 246-4343. So, yeah. So sorry to interrupt. I just, you mentioned it, Tammy, and it's an important thing, and it works quickly.
Yeah.
I think we can help clean up a lot of situations that will go unchecked if you're not getting. And the same mindset, you know, we've had problems with restaurants and grocery stores in this town. And I think that we need to put, you know, those numbers need to be called into Marion County Board of Health. They have the personnel that come out, they log the complaint, and it just doesn't go away. They go down and they'll have an inspection and to make sure that things are corrected in a timely manner.
The only, I'm going to interrupt you. Sorry. The only comment I would say about that is our code enforcement staff and building commissioner, do not let those calls go unacted upon.
There's no.
I want to make that very clear. In January, they were the ones that reported, followed up, and reminded that those things needed to be taken care of. So they take that very seriously.
Marion County Health Department has a lot bigger staff than what we have.
Yes.
And then plus, you know, they can get a response out there and they can shut them down if necessary to protect the health and safety of the residents of the town of Speedway. And you're right. Our code enforcement group needs to be following up and making sure that they're doing the job and on top of what that is, because it's important that we do that. But I think overall, you guys do a great job, and I applaud the whole team. It's great to see when we have action and working as a team within town of Speedway. And it shows when you can walk around and have 350,000 people show up, and the next day, you're looking for trash, you know. And those guys are out there working to make sure that that disappears off of our main thoroughfares. And you can be proud of your community from that standpoint. And I got to applaud Roger and his group. They take it very seriously, too, to make sure that cleans up. So if there's not anything else to report for tonight, it is 8:15. I'm going to call for an adjournment. Thank you for coming.